Good evening, everyone, to tonight's city council meeting. We will be led in a pledge and prayer tonight by council member Clint Bryant.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together here safely, Father, and we want to lean our hearts toward heaven tonight regarding the acts of terrorism that have happened across our country. We ask that you would keep every member of our city safe, every employee of the city safe, and just help us to continue moving this city forward. Please remove any self-interest that we might have tonight and keep us humble from this table. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Forbes.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Mellon.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Present.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Thank you. Today, I'd like to read something for the audience. Of course, good evening. This is a public meeting, so we ask that all members of the audience please remain quiet and refrain from speaking, interrupting, or otherwise disrupting the meeting. Also, I'd like to remind everyone, and perhaps councilmembers as well, to please turn off or silence all electronic devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I have an announcement as well. The city's waste convenience station is open to city residents on the second Saturday of the month from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 noon, and it's located at the Public Works Building used in the house. And city residents may dispose of items such as building materials and recycling for cans, plastic containers, and paper. The next collection day will be this Saturday, August 10th. Mayor, with that, we are now at public input.
Thank you. Welcome to all those who have signed up to address council tonight. Thank you for sharing with us your thoughts and input. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us, and we ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. When called to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. Let us know if you'll be speaking solely for yourself or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. We ask that your presentation be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to the council so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to the city staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our first speaker this evening is Mary McDonald.
Ms. McDonald?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Moore, and to each of the council persons here, city manager, and to those who are in attendance, my name is Mary McDonald. I live at 3395 Southfield Drive, Saginaw, Michigan. I only have three minutes, so I want to stick to the points. What I'm showing you is a picture of markers, gravestones, that were laid next to a building inside Forest Lawn Cemetery. My sister, Alice Robinson, passed away on February 16th, 2019. She was laid to rest on February 23rd. Her headstone was delivered on April 22nd, 2019. Her headstone is one of these laying next to the building inside the cemetery instead of being on her grave. I tried unsuccessfully to contact someone who would return a call to me. This was prior to my attending the council meeting of July 8th. I could not get a return call from Cemeteries Division, nor from Cemeteries Division. I contacted Councilman Balls, whom I know personally, who addressed my concern at the end of the July 8th meeting, and I thank you for doing so. I felt that I would receive a return call from Mr. Carwatt or someone prior to July 31st, since that meeting took place. A council meeting that I attended was July 8th. As I stated, my sister's marker was one of these laying next to that building in Forest Lawn Cemetery. It is now on her grave and was placed there, I believe, on the 9th of July. I had gone back and forth. I also spoke with Mayor Pro Tem Moore that night of the meeting, as well as our mayor, and so I thank each of you. But I'm very, very passionate about this, and I would hope never to see a scene like this again within Forest Lawn Cemetery. True, when I made the call to the Cemeteries Division, I said, "You don't want to see this on TV5 like the other cemetery." It shouldn't be like any cemetery. When loved ones are grieving, they've lost a loved one, they've paid for and ordered markers, they should be placed on graves as soon as possible. I know about rain, I know about mud, I know about drainage, okay? But no one can tell me that from February 23rd to July 9th, there wasn't a time when my sister's marker could have been placed on her grave. Now, I do want to give thanks before these three minutes are up. I want to give thanks to Nick Munoz. He is a godsend, if you will, a person who is articulate, a person who cares about the city, and one who does a fine job. He and whomever assisted him with getting my sister's marker down, I am truly appreciative. Are you trying to stop me?
I hate to do that, but I do have to. The time is up.
Oh, my Lord.
I apologize, but it is required.
Can I just say one more thing quickly, and I won't come back? I didn't receive a call from Phil Carwatt until July 31st, and what he said in the phone mail message that was left for me, I want to know if there's anything that I can do to keep you from coming to the meeting. That is not something that should be said to a citizen of Saginaw or any other city. I needed to come to this meeting, but my main concern tonight was to say thank you to your employee, Nick Munoz, and the folks who worked with him. Thank you, Councilman Balls and Mayor Pro Tem Moore.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ralph Cap.
Mr. Cap?
Mayor Pro Tem, councilmembers, city manager, Ralph Cap, 39, 13, Midnight Path. I'm here on behalf of my mom, 91 years old, in reference to sidewalk complaint back in 2010 for the trees that were uprooting her sidewalk, which was never addressed from the Streets Department to come and take care of the trees, which the sidewalk would have never heaved up. It was done this year, they came, removed them, put a new sidewalk on it, gave my mom a bill for $1,900. My mom's been a city citizen here for 60 years, paying taxes every year. I don't think it's right. Had the city done something prior to 2019, that sidewalk would have never heaved. So I'm just coming in front of you guys and asking, my mom is asking if you would waive that $1,900.
If that's a request, we cannot answer that now. We have to refer it to staff. That is what we're required to do, which is what we will do.
And then, I have the papers there, so you can look at it, which was dated from 2010, where this incident, that's how long it had been going on, and nothing was ever done for the trees.
We will refer it to staff and go from there.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Cap.
Thank you.
Mayor, our final speaker tonight is Sharon Denzie.
I have some great news. Go High, Get Outside for a Healthy Inside is now a nonprofit, and then we submitted the Wicks Park Plan to the American Planning Association and to the Michigan Planning Association, and we won an award. Over 200 awards or 200 papers, plans were submitted, and we won the grassroots award. So I'm really proud of what we did. And you'll see some movement there. You'll see a basketball court being redone, four basketball courts being redone, and so that should be a wonderful thing. We had a donor donate $20,000 to have that completed, and Jaeger gave us a lot of money off, so we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
All right. I'd like to remind councilmembers, there is a three-minute limit, and today we begin with Councilmember Bench.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to say I'm very glad to be home. I got to spend the last couple weeks and missed the last couple meetings because I was in Florida, meeting some long-lost family and a sister that I've known for, you know, about a decade on social media, but finally got the opportunity to meet in person, so as much as that was a lot of fun, but it's good to be back, so I'd rather be here, really. To our public speakers, Ms. Denzie, I think the entire time I've been on council, you have been tenaciously pursuing solutions for Wicks Park and our parks in the community, and it is so nice to see all your hard work paying off, and we're just lucky to have people hanging in there who are dedicated like you are, you know, working to make our city a better place. Ms. McDonald, my condolences on the loss of your sister. Speaking, you know, personally, we've heard from a lot of people about conditions in our cemeteries. We've had many conversations here at the table and with the administration about how best to take care of those issues, and it's a struggle, and it's a big struggle because the people that are affected are often people who are in the midst of grieving, and I'm sure it certainly feels like it's just a pile-on when you're already going through so much. And I know, I know Mr. Carwatt, I know our staff in the Cemeteries Department, there's never any intention on their part to make it worse, regardless of how things were resolved. I'm glad that they were resolved, but we certainly empathize with the situation, but we are struggling to come up with solutions to address our cemeteries, and I know that there are frequently weather-related issues that aren't entirely in our control, so my condolences, and I'm very glad that things were resolved for you, and God bless you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you to our public speakers who had the opportunity to address us tonight. Thank you for coming back and letting us know that it was placed. That's what I was told the next day that it was put down, because I had a conversation with some of our top leadership. Thank you, Ms. Denzie, for your work. You know, we had beautification day there, so I hope that we can add on and piece by piece by piece, get Wicks Park looking good, because it is a beautiful, beautiful property, and this spring I was so surprised how many hundreds of people have never been there. And once you go there, you'll fall in love with it, and that's the same way I feel about our city. Once you're here, you see our people, you embrace this culture, you'll love it. We had some really exciting events. I want to let everybody know, Mayor Pro Tem Moore was in the dunk tank for Friday Night Live. And for, I'm not a good throw. I'm not, I'm not very good at sports. I can throw a football, but baseball, not so much. So for $20, you could go push the button. So you know I had to go up there, and they tried to hand me the ball. They said, "No, no, no, for the $20, I get to push the button." So Mayor Pro Tem Moore was a good sport, raised some cash for the community foundation, so I told them that I will always gladly contribute, so anybody else on the board that would like to get in the dunk tank, you better believe I will support you. Our county commissioners, and welcome to Commissioner Sheldon Matthews. And just to give him a plug, he had a great event this past weekend with the Summer Breeze at Huntington Event Park. I was not able to attend because I was out at the fair almost every single day for at least a few hours out there greeting some of our citizens and other citizens of the larger county, but that was a really, I'm a city boy, and I am not used to cows and sheeps and goats, but it was fun. It was a really fun experience, and I'll probably go a little bit next year, just a little bit. But we do have some really exciting events. People always say there's nothing to do in Saginaw, I would beg to differ, because we build entertainment and we build excitement. So there's a couple events that I just want to run through real quick. We have the H.M. Boyd Community Garden. They're having a Family Day, August 10th, from 10 till 1, and that's at 1416 South Hamilton. We also have an upcoming Friday Night Live for Motown. I'll be singing the National Anthem, and our council will be out there again. We've had a really successful, I'm proud of Mayor Pro Tem Moore, she wanted us to get out there, something I think we all love, but it's good to mix and mingle with our citizens right at the gate. As soon as they're coming in, I seen people pass the Temple Theater, and I was greeting them, they were coming from Bay City. One last thing, we do have the Art Fair, Old Town Art Fair, that's going to take place this weekend, and also the African Cultural Festival. It's the 51st year of that, so make sure you visit some of those events this weekend, and I had the opportunity, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the certificate of recognition for a personal good friend of mine and a friend to the city, Ms. Redus Wilshen. She celebrated her 60th birthday, and it was good to present her with a proclamation, so thank you so much, and met the world tour.
Councilmember Forbes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to our public speakers tonight, so pleased to hear the positive news about Go High. That has been a long project, and I'm so excited that we'll see the new basketball courts soon, and just as Councilmember Bryant mentioned, that's just the first of many, I'm sure, and so I'm certainly looking forward to that. Wicks Park is such a special place. Ms. McDonald, I repeat my fellow councilmember and wish my condolences to you and your family on your loss. I was not here for that particular meeting, but I'm so glad to see that there's been resolution for you. This is a really important issue, it's about people's memories, and so. So I did miss the dunk tank, unfortunately, but I was at Friday Night Live the previous week and had a great time talking to folks about the issues facing the city. I'm glad to see some of those faces here again tonight. And as I mentioned before, we had talked about how we were going to have Sidney Ververca's coloring pages of Saginaw City landmarks, and we had those with us on that Friday, which is a good reason to come and visit us at the next Friday Night Live, to check them out, because they're really cool. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ostash?
Well, I want to wish everybody a nice evening, and to start off, Mary, I'm very sorry to hear that you went through a lot of pain and anguish, but myself too, condolences to you, and I'm glad everything get resolved. Just a couple of announcements, Mayor. There is a, coming up on August 10th, it's the India Fair, and that's going to be held at the Saginaw Soccer Complex, and so I guess it's for the kids, and there's admission is $3, so if you want more information about that, it's online. Also, too, to reiterate what my fellow councilmembers are saying, this week is the Art Fair, and I've been talking about that for a few meetings, so I'm excited, I'm going to be down there and looking forward to that. And also, I'll try to get more information for everybody, but I'm just going to kind of throw it out there right now, that there is a chocolate affair which will be coming up in the future for Delta College. It's a big fundraiser to help students that are in the high school that are looking to go on to college and how to get into the program, so I'm happy to be working with that event this year and co-chairing that with Wayne Hoffman, so that's all I really have.
Thank you. Councilmember Balls?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to, I hate to be redundant, but I must admit that I'm glad that Mary's issue has been resolved, and I'd like to thank Mr. Carwatt for taking care of that, you know, as soon as he could take care of it, and I'm sure there was no intent to harm anybody, you know, because you know that's a sensitive situation. So I'm just glad you got it done, and you got it done. And I'd like to thank Ms. Denzie more too for the work she's doing here in our community. A lot of people may not realize, but we don't have a Parks Division in the city of Saginaw, but we have a lot of neighborhood associations that have taken upon themselves to take care of some parks. Matter of fact, my neighborhood association want to take on our little park that we have in our neighborhood, and we're working on beautifying that. You know, and on a summary note, one of the kids in our neighborhood, he got murdered last week, just turned 24 years old. He had gotten some trouble earlier in his life, and he's straightened himself out, he's working and taking care of his family, and I don't know what happened, but he was murdered, and it just hurts my heart for these young people to be murdered in our city. And it comes to remind me of, everybody can be involved in a young person's life, that's why I've been involved in Big Brother, Sister Troy, Wamf, over 30 years, board of directors, seven, eight little brothers, because I know that we can make this city better if we just try. All we have to do is to get involved in a kid's life and spend some quality time with them. You'd be surprised on how they turn out. All the little brothers I had, I had six of them, I worked on the seventh, and none of, one of them got into trouble one night, the police gave him a wedgie, and he'd been good ever since, and the other guys are doing pretty good too right now. And I know to help him out, the young guy that I got now, I had the opportunity to do what I always do for all my little brothers, I got him a toolbox, and we got a lot of used tools, and I got him a full set of tools in his box, and I know it's going to help him out to be a better human being, because he's going to know how to fix some things. And I'm not going to be the only one fixing some bikes, you know, this guy can learn how to fix his own bikes, and maybe some of the kids in the neighborhood, so I'm just saying, man, we all can help out just by being involved in a kid's life. It don't take a lot of time, it's all about quality time. Just spending some time when they're just doing some things, you'd be surprised how much you turn a kid's lives around, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Mellon?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I just wanted to mention two things tonight. Driving in the neighborhoods, I noticed one of our partners in Saginaw, the Saginaw Sugar Beets, is developing a training facility for their youth baseball program in the Riverfront District. They're taking over, used to be an auto repair shop at the corner of Genesee and Niagara, behind the gas station there, and they've got their logo up, they're making some real progress there. I expect we'll hear about a grand opening at that facility sometime later this year. And I also wanted to mention about the African-American Cultural Festival coming up at Morley Park, August 9th, 10th, and 11th. I am assured by our own Fire Marshal Ralph Martin, who's on the organizing committee, even though it's the 51st, not the 50th, it's still going to be a very exciting event, and want to see everybody out there. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Scherzer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It has been a very busy few weeks. I did attend Gospel Fest, Commissioner Matthews, I'm sorry I did not have the chance to attend your event, it was hot. But Gospel Fest was on Saturday, it was an awesome event. I just want to share a couple other things that are coming up, just to remind our citizens. Next, I think it's Thursday, the 14th, Samaritan's is having their back-to-school giveaway, I think it's the first one for the end of the summer, so if you can, make it out there. They have bounce houses and food and backpacks and all of the great stuff. Also, next week is Rock the Block at Huntington Event Park, that's on the 15th, from 6 to 9. Jerry Ross Band and Slow Express will be performing. And then on the 17th, Kiss 107 Family Affair is taking place at Morley Plaza. So those are some great things coming up, in addition to Friday Night Live and Jazz at Anderson and Richmond Center, so there's tons to do. I do want to give a shout-out to our Mayor Pro Tem, you did an awesome job yesterday on Kiss 107, Community Connections, representing the city, so a great job to you. And then I just, along with our speakers, thank you for coming. I'm so glad to hear of the great things happening at Wicks Park. I attended beautification day, and to Mary, I know you, and I'm, my condolences, but I'm glad things were resolved. In addition to that, the African Cultural Festival, like many of the councilmembers have mentioned, is this weekend. I hope to see everybody at 4 o'clock, especially 4 o'clock on Saturday, because I will be performing, along with some of my other friends in the Divine Nine, but that's at 4 o'clock, but there are so many things planned. There's a bike show, I'll bring my bike out on Friday, too. There's Concert Friday, there's the bike show and car show, there's the step show that I'm in at 4 o'clock, and then there's also Mama Soul's performing, so hopefully everyone comes out. And last but not least, I could not, I have to mention my heart and prayer and condolences to all of the victims and the families that have been affected by the violence. We need less hate in this world and more love, because love always wins, so prayers and wishes to everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Moore?
Good evening. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank all of the speakers, as always. If you call and let us know what's going on, the majority of the time, we can try to help, and so that's what we try to do. The last couple of weeks have been pretty, pretty busy. On Saturday, the 27th, I had the opportunity to do the ribbon-cutting ceremony for ages 7 to 17 young entrepreneurs at the farmer's market. It was fabulous. Young people have all the creativity that you could ever want. It was from slime, and the little girl told me, "Don't mess up your furniture," and I said, "I beg to differ." They had rocks, where they painted rocks to make Tic Tac Doughpours. It was just truly, truly exciting, and I know that the city would probably be angry, but I gave every last one of them a pen, officially letting them know that they were entrepreneurs for the city of Saginaw, so they now sport their little pens, and they were so happy. One of the young babies said to me, "Ladies are not mayors." I said, "Well, I'm not your typical lady," so, you know, I don't know what you're talking about. And so then she started laughing, and so it was just a great day to be with the young people, and so I want to give a shout-out to the young people. They are going to try to do another affair, and I will make sure that I let everybody know that these, it was 16 groups, some had one, some had three. They ranged from book writing, to soap making, to fizzles, to, what is that, tie dye, cupcakes. These young people were on the ball. I wish they had been my grandchildren, because I'd have said, "Oh, we could have been got this going." But they were so, so enthused. And the one good thing about young people is this, young people don't have any violence in them if we give them something to do, and so I was truly excited for them. One girl said, "Oh, I made $300," and she was just shaking her little money. I said, "Girl, put that money up, put it up." So, you know, these are some of the things, you hear people talking about it, Saginaw is real right now. We are on the move. Shout-out goes to Mr. Matthews, we were in the dunk tank together on Friday, yes, Councilman Bryant, and some more people just said, "We ain't fit for doing this, give you your $20." So they just paid to dunk me, and it was fun. It's all about the city. We will be back at Friday Night Live on Friday, so council people, I need your support. I also need your support for Kiss 107 Family Affair, August the 17th. I'm obedient.
Well, I may not be, I may have to actually ruin my time because I have something special. However, we'll start, I'm not going to repeat what's been covered, because everyone's covered a lot of things already. But I do want to mention, first of all, following up on the fact that Mayor Pro Tem mentioned that kids need something to do when they're not violent, if they do, Hoyt Park, the Friends of Hoyt Park, have been hosting this summer a youth baseball league. They're having 400-plus youth, 20-some teams there every Tuesday and Thursday night. A lot of people are watching. If you're interested in baseball, it's a great opportunity to watch a lot of kids out having a good time and staying, staying away from violence, and it also highlights the parks. This is a, the Friends of Hoyt Park have adopted this park and are doing a wonderful job there, so looking forward to the Wicks Park adoption as well. I also want to give a shout-out to Officer of the Month for August, Detective DeSean Harris. I want to wish him congratulations on this achievement, and I also want to congratulate Chief Ruth, who is to be commended as the Saginaw Police Department was selected for the 2019 International Association of Chiefs of Police Award for Leadership in Victims' Services for Midsize Agencies, for their efforts to assist victims of crime. Thank, congratulations, Chief. Think that's a great achievement in how we show respect for and care for the victims of crime. Then I also want to mention, I attended the Michigan, Minnesota League's, Michigan Association of Mayors Conference on Thursday and Friday. There were 70-plus mayors there, it was a very good turnout. There were a lot of good networking with surrounding communities. Topics covered included everything from public and private partnerships, strategic and economic development, placemaking, promoting the community, and the MEDC incentive tools for economic development. I'll be talking with staff in the future on some of those ideas, see if we can use or implement any of them for Saginaw. Next, I want to mention that last week, 15 high school students were here in the council chamber. in the council chambers, um, they were in, at Saginaw Valley State College for, or State University for a week. Um, myself and my spouse Diane, who is here, had an opportunity to meet them the day after they came to Saginaw Valley the week before, and we had an opportunity to greet them and introduce them to Saginaw Municipal Government, to talk, uh, about how this government operates in the city, and, and to interact with them. And that's why I might need a little more time, because they brought a gift for the city, a couple gifts, actually. The first of which is a... These are from Tokushima, Tokushima Students, Tokushima Municipal High School, and, um, this is one of the places, when we were in Tokushima two, a year and a half ago, we were able to visit the high school. And, uh, so they brought this as a gift for the city. This features the indigo dye for which Tokushima High School, oh, Tokushima is famous for. So, as you can see, it's a beautiful, beautiful dye, it's different colors of blue, and it really highlights the, uh, the indigo dye. In addition, they also brought three, these are from the students, mind you, they brought three sets of, of chopsticks with, what's really cute, cute, is they have a little toothpick holder. That goes, if I can put it back in, with the chopsticks. So these will be returned to the city, but there is something I'm gonna also, they brought one more thing, and that was individual toothpick holders. So, there's one here for each council member.
I want the blue one.
The blue one? Okay, but I'll take the...
We don't have no blue one.
Yes, there is. There's a little one right here.
We have a purple one.
So, I, I think that sister-city relationship is really tremendous, it's been on, and it is continuing. There were, as I said, there were fifteen students here, and they spent a week at Saginaw Valley, uh, University, they were learning about, about Michigan, about Saginaw, and about our community, and I think that's really an important, uh, relationship. So with that, I am complete with my comments.
That takes us to the reports from the manager.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, so, um, first, I would, uh, also apologize to Ms. McDonald for the issues that she had, um, at the cemetery, and, um, but also say that, uh, I talked to Phil Carwatt immediately following the meeting, and I know he was on it that evening, and the next morning, he was talking with Mr. Munoz, who is the foreman at the cemeteries, and he, he is a, a good, very good employee, um, very good foreman. Um, in there, there are issues at the cemetery, and I think the only way that they can be addressed is if we have more employees there. So, probably mid-year, we will be bringing, uh, a request to council to add some employees there. Currently, we have three full-time employees, and previously, we had, uh, fifteen full-time employees. So, we, we always hear about, and rightfully so, you know, there was a lot of declines, we hear about police and fire, but with these other departments in the city, because we did have another issue come in about grass cutting, but the, the cemeteries, and they also used to have, um, twenty temporary employees, we have four now. So if you've gone to, and we also, uh, are trying to replace equipment there, you've seen, because if you go to a funeral there, you'll see that a lot of our equipment is very old as well, and that has an impact, but we're still doing four hundred burials a year. And, um, the cemetery property is two-hundred-and-fifty acres, so all of that needs to be cut, and we have eighty thousand headstones, so there is a need for some additional employees there, so we're looking at, how can we do that, how can we fund it, and can we split some of them, so look for that, probably in December, January, we'll be bringing that to you. So hopefully that will address some of those issues, too. Okay? And, um, just a couple things, because we do have two presentations this evening, um, if you probably also saw, if you looked at the police newsletter, that they did, uh, complete their space program, uh, the Saginaw Police Appreciate Children Every Day, and that's a week-long program that, uh, some training for young adults to provide an opportunity to learn more about a career in law enforcement. And, um, the police department worked on putting that in place, it's very similar, the fire chief and his, uh, command staff put together a similar program in the fire department that they've been doing for a few years, so, um, the idea there is to get local youth interested in those jobs so that they can eventually fill them in our police department and fire department. So, congratulate both the chiefs on those programs and, and the police department, uh, Detective Deshaun Harris and Officer Moore both work on that, and as the mayor mentioned, um, Detective Harris is also the August Officer of the Month. Um, in addition to the space program, he is a member of the, uh, emergency services team, a student resource officer assigned to the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Program, and he's also working towards his prevention specialist license, so congratulations to him. And, uh, the, another item that came up in the past few weeks that you probably saw in the paper is the CMU and Covenant Healthcare Agreement. That's a great step for health education in the city of Saginaw and for Covenant, so it's great to have it here in the city, but that is, uh, unique in both its length and scope, establishes a twenty-five-year partnership to provide opportunities for CMU students to train at Covenant facilities supervised by physicians who are also CMU faculty members. It'll create new opportunities for clinical research as well and collaborations to address the most pressing community health issues in the region, which was, one of the goals for, um, the CMU Medical School was to address, uh, more rural health issues, so hopefully that partnership will, uh, continue along beyond the twenty-five years. And finally, um, there was a decision that came down from the, um, State Appeals Court, a case for the taxpayers for Michigan Constitutional Government, I know a few of you have asked me about that in the past, but it was, uh, that group filed suit against the state accusing it of violating the Michigan Constitution's requirement how the state funds local governments. So, there were, there was a three-part decision, two were in favor of this organization, so we'll be following that, uh, case as it progresses, I would, I would, um, guess that the state will probably try to appeal that up, uh, to the next level, which would be the Supreme Court, but it is a good decision, and, um, basically, they said that they weren't funding, uh, local units at the appropriate level, so. Our city attorney will follow that, and if we get more information, we'll update you on that as well. And with that, um, we have two presentations this evening related to the water system, and first one, I think, uh, council members were requesting, um, when the new rules came out, so, uh, we wanted to present, uh, to you regarding the new lead and copper rules for the state of Michigan. So we do have Jennifer Drinon from, uh, Senior Project Manager from OHM Advisors, who's been working with the city for some time, so, ask her to come up and, uh, give you her presentation.
Thank you for inviting me tonight to talk to you about the lead and copper rule in the city of Saginaw's, um, lead service line replacement program. We're gonna start off with an overview of lead and its effects on public health, then a discussion on the regulations, and then a summary of what the city of Saginaw has been doing to date. So why do we care about lead? Um, we care about lead because of its impacts on public health. Lead is a known bioaccumulating neurotoxin, it accumulates in the soft tissues of, um, your bones, and it can damage your brain, your nervous system, and your kidneys. The impacts on children are more significant than on adults, and that's because they're developing those, those central nervous systems in their brains during the years of zero to five. Currently, there is no known safe level of lead, uh, for your bloodstream. The CDC has been decreasing their action levels, uh, based on blood, lead levels since nineteen-seventy-one. When the CDC first started monitoring, um, children's blood lead levels, the action level was sixty micrograms per deciliter, and the current rate right now is five micrograms per deciliter, so the requirements are becoming more strict. We're probably all familiar with where lead is involved in, in our society, gasoline, paint, and then also the plumbing. In nineteen-seventy-five, well, actually, lead was introduced into gasoline back in the nineteen-twenty's. It was, uh, introduced to prevent knocking of your engines, and then also to prevent, uh, to prolong the life of seals in the, um, exhaust systems. In nineteen-seventy-five, the EPA required the use of catalytic converters, and then that resulted in the ban of lead in gas for vehicles used on the roads. Lead has also been used in paint for centuries, the benefits there are improved, um, pigments, also improved durability and water resistance, and it also drives faster. In nineteen-seventy-four, it was determined that one of the pathways to get into the blood system was through the dust from, from lead paint, and in nineteen-seventy-eight, the EPA banned the use of residential, um, paints that had lead, both interior and exterior. It continued to be used until nineteen-nineties in commercial and industrial settings. And then lead, too, has also always been used a lot in the water systems. It is material that's abundant, and it's very durable, and it's soft, which allows it to be bent, bent easily, and that's one of the reasons it, it's been used. Um, since the CDC started tracking, uh, blood lead levels back in the nineteen-seventies, before the ban on, um, lead gas, the, the average blood lead levels for children was about fifteen micrograms per deciliter, and then after banning lead in gas, it dropped to five. So, um, the EPA, working on, uh, on the water side, um, in nineteen-eighty-six, it banned, uh, lead in plumbing materials, including fixtures. Then in nineteen-eighty-eight, it, we started the Lead Contamination and Control Act as part of the Safe Drinking Water Act, and that was addressing, um, lead piping in schools and also child daycare sys, systems. It wasn't, it was left up to states to enforce, so it wasn't enforced consistently around the country, and you also probably hear a lot of issues these days about Detroit Public Schools and even the schools in Ann Arbor struggling with, um, lead piping within their systems. In nineteen-ninety-one was the first lead and copper rule that the EPA issued, and that was really focusing on corrosion control from the treatment systems out into the distribution. And it was a very complex rule, and, um, it was focusing on dissolved lead in water, not the particulates that you can get from, um, the scales that build up in the pipes. It has gone through many revisions, and in twenty-eleven, it, um, dropped what was considered lead-free for those fixtures that you have in, in your bathrooms and kitchens, and starting in January first, twenty-fourteen, those fixtures now are really truly lead-free, the ones back in nineteen-eighty-six still had, um, significant traces of lead in them. And then I think everyone is familiar with, I'm sorry, um, in twenty-fourteen through twenty-sixteen, it was the Flint Water Crisis that has brought this to a national attention. And, um, in twenty-seventeen, the, um, our governor, then Governor Schneider, he wanted to make sure that we had the strictest laws here in, in the state of Michigan when it came to lead and, and distribution systems. And that's where he's created a task force and had many stakeholders and other agencies participating in order to come up with a new lead and copper rule just for the state of Michigan. That went through public hearings and several drafts, and it was voted on by legislature in June of twenty-eighteen, and it became the laws that we are following today. Some significant dates according to that new lead and copper rule that Michigan is under, um, by September twenty-eighteen, the, the state had to come up, develop a advisory council, and their primary goal is to provide guidance to the local communities, guide, or advisory councils, um, to improve the transparency, 'cause that was one of the issues with Flint, was there was a lack of transparency and concerns of what the government was doing and the public's perception of it. In October twenty-eighteen, there was some legal challenges. These were coming out of mostly southeast Michigan, led by Oakland County, and they were concerned that the way the new lead and copper rule was brought into existence, that it didn't follow proper procedures. This was actually just ruled on by a judge, uh, the past week or two, and he's upholding the, um, the new lead and copper rules that the state of Michigan has, um, ratified. And in the articles that I read, Oakland County is not at this time, or the other members, looking to appeal that decision, they believe that they have been working more closely now with the department, it used to be Department of Environmental Quality, it's now Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, we call it Eagle. And, um, so there's a little bit more cooperation as they're working through creating guidelines and stuff of how to implement this new lead and copper rule. In December twenty-eighteen, that's when communities that have a population of fifty-thousand or more needed to create their own advisory council. And then starting in January first, twenty-nineteen, um, the new sampling requirements of the new lead and copper rule came into existence. And the new lead, the new sampling are designed to, um, do a first and a fifth-liter draw, the old sampling requires, recor, huh, requirements were just for the first liter. With the new ones, you're trying to get the first liter, we'll take, um, the sample basically of what the piping is within the house, and then after you draw five liters, you're looking at hopefully more what the water might look like in the distribution system. Going forward, there's a couple more key compliance dates on the horizon. Uh, for January first, twenty-twenty, each community is gonna be required to have a preliminary distribution systems material inventory up to date, and this is really a desktop inventory, this is when you review all the records that are available to your community, whether it's as-built drawings, permit records, that kind of thing, and create what you believe your service lines consist of, what kind of material, if it's lead, copper, galvanized, or plastic. Starting January first of twenty-twenty-one, actually, the replacement of the lead service lines need to begin. The new rule requires that five percent of your service lines need to be replaced every year, so it's about a twenty-year program. Then by January first, twenty-twenty-five, is when you need to have a complete inventory, a verified inventory of your service materials. So that was the preliminary one that you did with your desktop, um, for the verified one, you're actually, you're gonna go out and dig out both sides of the curb stop and determine what side, what the materials were, so that you know how to prioritize your replacement program. Attached, so here, this is a representation of what a lead service, or what a service line would be in your system. So, this one just depicts the water main being in the middle of the street, and then a curb stop would be located at your property line. And the city of Saginaw considers the pipe material from, from the main to the curb stop to be something called the connection, and historically, that has always been maintained and replaced by city. The section of pipe that goes from the curb stop to the meter, which is usually in the basement of the house, that is considered the extension, and historically, that has been the responsibility of the, the property owner. Under the new lead and copper rule, there's no longer, there's a ban on partial replacements, and those would be things in the past where if there was a leak at the curb stop, the city would come out and they would replace the connection pipe up to the curb stop, and they would connect it to a good piece of pipe on the other side, and then it would be up to the homeowner's determination if he needed to, he or she needed to replace that, that portion of the pipe. Under the new lead and copper rule, the whole line needs to be replaced at once, and that's to eliminate the particulates of the lead that could build up in the scale if it's a galvanized pipe from getting into the plumbing inside the house. So, for progress to date, um, the city of Saginaw has actually built a really strong collaborative team with the water department, with the IT department, engineering, maintenance and service. In order to accomplish this, we've had to look at a lot of different... In order to accomplish this, we've had to look at a lot of different materials, a lot of different ways in order to replace these service lines and to even just develop what we know the city of Saginaw has. As part of the new lead and copper rule, the state was concerned about how this was going to be implemented. And they, at the beginning, back in twenty eighteen, they invited, I think it was eighteen communities to submit applications to receive grant funds. And the city of Saginaw did receive nine hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars to participate in this pilot program, which was to implement the lead and copper rules. Under that, we have focused on doing the preliminary data review, looking at ASVIL drawings, what's in the GIS system, what's in the maintenance records and permits. In addition, since February twenty eighteen, there's been approximately six hundred lead service lines been replaced by city staff. And also during some of the road projects for Bay Street and for Mackinac, those service lines have also been replaced. We've developed some public engagement materials. There's some frequently asked questions now on your website, and we have some other ideas for your website to keep the public informed that are in progress. And the advisory council has been created, and that has met three times. These are just a few photos of some of the, of some of the work that is being done. The first photo on the left just shows an excavation with a vector truck, and that's where, that's something that we'll be doing to verify the materials. And then the other two photos are just showing different methods by which the new copper pipe is being installed behind the removal of the lead. So that was one of the goals with the pilot grant, was to, the state was looking for different communities to try different methods and come back in different meetings and share those experiences out to everyone, so everyone could learn from each other. So how big of a challenge is this for the city of Saginaw? Well, the city of Saginaw has approximately thirty thousand service lines within the city. Of those thirty thousand, about eighteen thousand five hundred are currently active. Of those eighteen thousand five hundred, fifty-five hundred of them, we believe, have a lead connection. We don't know necessarily where all the extensions are, lead or copper. There was permit data for the extension sides from nineteen fifty-seven until present that we were able to review. Of that data from nineteen fifty-seven onward on the extension side, the majority of those were copper. There was only two records that showed lead and maybe a hundred that showed galvanized. So from nineteen fifty-seven on, it's probably a copper line. But what we're probably worried from, about is probably before World War Two boom back. Those are probably going to be the issues. In total, we're probably, we're estimating right now that there's going to be about twelve thousand lead service lines that need to be replaced. The lead and copper rule actually is looking for replacements to be performed over twenty years. But in certain circumstances, Eagle is open to discussions of extending that. We're looking to look at a twenty-five-year replacement program because of the extent that's the number that Saginaw has, then also some of the economic challenges in this area. For prioritizing, we're still really trying to figure that out, what is going to be the priorities. But we're going to look at for lines, first, they have both the extension and the connection as lead would be a top priority, then moving on to lead and galvanized options after that. So for our plans for a cost-effective way to replace these pipes, as I had mentioned earlier, as part of the pilot program, there's been several meetings where communities got to report back on some of their experiences. And of the eighteen communities, I believe Saginaw is the only one that was really focusing on doing some of the work internally. Most of the other communities did hire outside contractors. And they shared back, you know, the fees and stuff that they were receiving from them. So for the outside contractors, they're looking at an average of, well, a range usually from three thousand dollars per service line replacement to nine thousand. And it all kind of depends on how much restoration, where the meters are located in the building, that kind of thing. The city during this pilot program has done those six hundred replacements with their own staff, and their average cost is like three thousand or less. So based on that, they really, we're approaching this program to do it internally with utilizing city staff. We believe it will provide a lot better control over both the quality and also the communication, because it's going to be an extensive communication process. We have to get waivers for access onto private property than just the coordination of, you know, getting them home when we need them home, those kind of items. And even if it was used by an outside contractor, there's still stuff that city staff would need to do. The final times to the meters are usually done by city staff. So there is huge benefits. Another benefit was also, there's going to be a lot of institutional knowledge that's going to be gained from this project of knowing where the water mains are, where the service lines are. And if that knowledge can stay within the city, it will just enhance future maintenance going forward. So for long-term and short-term cost expectations, as I mentioned, it's going to be a twenty-to-twenty-five year process, and labor and materials costs are going to go up. We're hoping that by keeping the knowledge within the city, there's going to be a learning curve and experiences, and that will help offset some of those rising costs. And the city staff has set up a new service line division as part of the budget, so that they'll be able to track and report back on their progress. And actually, the next presentation is really going to talk a little bit more about rates and how this is going to get paid for. I guess I had the easier part. But if, I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any questions.
Councilmembers, questions? Yes, Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Jennifer.
Hi.
I have a, two or three different questions here. We might as well start with the screen about the number of service lines and the various numbers after that. You listed thirty thousand service lines, but approximately eighteen thousand five hundred are active.
Yep.
And of the thirty thousand, there's twelve thousand lead. First thing, is that lead and galvanized? Are that twelve thousand, or is that straight lead?
That's lead and galvanized.
And galvanized, okay.
So under the, yeah, under the new rule, the city of Saginaw, most of their connections here are either going to be lead or they're going to be copper. And it depends on what the water main material was. If it was cast iron, odds are that the connection could be lead. But if it was a transite or something that was installed from the fifties and later, it would be copper.
Right. Of the active lines, you said there's about fifty-five hundred.
Lead connections, yeah.
Lead connections. Do these rules actually cover replacing non-active connections?
Well, non-active lines, what they need to be is they need to be abandoned at the main. So on the, on the sketch here, there's a valve that's right on the edge of the water main, it's called the corporation.
Right.
And that is where any lead lines that are not active, they're not in service, that valve needs to be enclosed and the pipe needs to be disconnected. That way, so that lead would not come back into the distribution system.
And we have a large number where that wasn't done as part of any demolition process, then?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. So they may have just stopped it at the curb stop?
Correct. That probably twenty years ago was a suitable solution.
On this same screen, it mentions that it is first lead, then galvanized. Copper services may be replaced if needed. Could you describe a needed replacement of a copper service?
If there was an emergency repair where at the curb stop, maybe it was leaking on both sides.
And it would be funded and come under this program rather than just regular maintenance?
I believe so. That would spend some of the discussions we've had today.
Okay. Because it also then mentions the city will replace any service line two inches and smaller for a maximum of one in the twenty-twenty-five year period. And I'm not sure if this is your language or ours that we asked you to put in here, all residents would benefit from the fee. Most people, if they already have a copper line, have no need to replace the line, and if it were an emergency replacement, that's regular maintenance. So we'll get to more of that in the rate setting part, I'm sure. But I'm going to register some skepticism about all residents benefiting. But those are the questions I had that concern your presentation. Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? I did, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mayor Brokehead.
Hi, Jennifer. I know you're going to get to the cost. How many houses have you done already and what, where have you done them? Is this like, I know that some people in my neighborhood had stuff done because they had water mains that broke.
Yep.
And so they worked on them. So how many have you done? I knew Phil was going to walk up here when I said that.
Well, I'll do my best to help Jennifer, but like she said, we're all working as a team, and I got Tom and Josh here. But I think she stated, I think we've done six or seven hundred or more, because what the rule says, not only the new rule now, you have to, you can't make a repair if it's a, if it's a lead or galvanized line. So what used to happen back in the day and even before the rule became is you couldn't make a repair to a lead line. So where the curb stop is, so like Jennifer said, basically, there's two parts of this. There's the connection, which is from the main to the curb stop, which has always been, for the most part, if it's less than fifty years old, the responsibility of the city. But then from the curb stop to the meter has always been the homeowner. If you had a leak after the curb stop, basically, the homeowner, I mean, we would advise them of that, work with them in the best way we can, because that's what we do with our residents and our businesses, to help. But they would then have to call a contractor and come out and get a full service line replacement, because you could not just make a repair. If it's within a half a foot or a foot, we might cut it off and quick tie it back over so they can have good service until they hire a contractor to come out and do the work. So back in the day, we used to just make them repairs. Now we have to do the, if it's, if that's happening. And that would be considered emergency where a homeowner may be without water. Back in the day, we could have buttoned it up a little bit until they could have a contractor come out a year ago. Now we have to make a full-blown replacement of that, which is then part of this program. But if, if, when we're at that point, if the connection from the main to the curb stop is copper, we'll just replace then from the curb stop to the meter with copper. But if that's lead or galvanized, mostly more so lead than it would be galvanized, we have to replace that all the way back to the main as well. So, but just trying to go through all of our records and documents with dates and when could they have went from lead to copper. And then the other thing we have to be careful about when we come up with this list is years ago, when we would do construction projects and replace the water main, we'd put a new copper connection in, but we'd only put it up to the curb stop. But back when I was a city engineer, I remember many a times that when you try to tie copper back on to galvanize, it's, it's very corrosive and pitting. And you might tie a foot back, you turn the service back on, and there's another leak, another foot back. And sometimes you chase these things, sometimes almost up to the house. So even if you excavate it at both sides of the curb stop, five feet, it might be copper on the backside of the curb stop, but five feet back, it could be back to galvanized. So part of our process is going to be not only exposing it at the curb stop, but also getting into the house and trying to see what's coming through the wall and into the meter for type of material, but.
So you're going to talk about prices, right?
Yeah.
Because I'm in an old house, and I need to know, do I need the.
Well, real quick and before they get into the rate, right now, and like Jennifer said, first of all, we're trying to minimize, this was, this was forced upon us by the state, which is great for everybody, though. I mean, let's get all the lead out. I mean, you know what I mean? So it's going to be great, but somebody has to pay for it.
No, I'm just joking. You know, I'm just joking.
No, but just so you know.
A little human makes all of us laugh, especially when we got a dig in our pockets.
But, and Tom from Ruff Dallas was talking a little bit, but what we've calculated based on how, at this time, we've said basically, you know, every residential or commercial property with a service two inch or less, which could be, because we don't know who did or didn't replace them, we wouldn't do the best we can to go through our records, but that's going to take some time too as well. Some houses been demolished, some haven't, maybe that replaced the service. But right now, our numbers are about, based on the number of billable units that would be paying for it, it's about just over six dollars for every, six dollars per house per month for every million dollars needed, somewhere right around there. So the first year, we're only, you know, because we're just going, we're just getting into it, so we're only doing half of that. So this year, the, the fee is going to be like half of the six, so three dollars in some sense per month per house. And then going into fiscal year twenty-one, it's going to be just over, I believe, six dollars per month per house, so like, you know, seventy-two dollars a year when we get right into the full-blown replacement program. But keep in mind now, if we didn't do that in-house, that cost could be double or triple that, knowing we're controlling the cost. That was the main, some of, and then the contractor cost, right now, in the industry, there's not enough contractors. So you're paying two to three, four times, if two years ago, you could have got your connection replaced for twenty-five hundred or three grand, you're now seeing five, seven, eight, nine, ten thousand dollars. By bringing it in-house, we control, first of all, the labor costs, you know, and we get a better deal. We don't have to pay markup on material and that, because we're, you know, municipalities, so we get a better deal on all the materials and everything else. And, you know, just with our, a lot of times, you get these contractors trying to work with the homeowners, get in and out of their house, it's very touchy. So, you know, our people know how to work with the residents to get in and out of their house at proper times to, and then, you know, we're going under footings, we're coming under foundations, we're going through walls, I mean, we're in their house, because we have to replace all the way to the meter.
And the question that Councilman Mill asked about everybody paying the fee benefiting, that's something we talked about a lot, because we didn't want everybody to pay for twelve thousand homes or ten thousand homes. So we will have a fund within the enterprise fund that holds money. And if, regardless of what type of, if you had replaced your line fifteen years ago, if your line needs to be replaced, the city will replace it. Where in the past, we used to say, okay, well, after the curb stop, it's your responsibility, but we'll replace that once. So maybe you won't be living there anymore, but the next time it gets replaced, that's what.
Well, and then the other thing, the burden of removing those eighteen thousand lines out of the thirty, why would, should that just be borne on those that already replaced theirs? So, because that has to be done all the way to the main as well, and there's going to be costs associated with, as we talked about, the thirty thousand connections, the DEQs, Eagle now requires, because back in the day, we would just shut the curb stops off, and then when they'd abandon the home, we'd fold the copper over on the backside of the curb stop, or the galvanized or whatever material it was. But now, we got to verify what that is, and if it's galvanized or lead, we got to cut it off at the main, cut the pavement out, dig the road up, haul that all the way back filled with sand, and then, so them cost as well, I don't think, so it's not an easy, simple way to figure out. So that was the best way we could come up with, because then the burden of doing that shouldn't just be borne on the remaining residents that did not replace their, their services already.
Councilmember.
You got another one?
Yeah.
Keep going, Member Bryant.
No way. I wasn't done.
Let's let Councilman Bryant, you may need to go.
Make your face.
All right. I just have a question on liability. I was fortunate to be on the planning commission at the time that the new jail was being constructed, and that was, it was an issue. So could we talk a little bit about the liability? Maybe that speaks to the waiver? I don't know.
Yeah. So what we did as part of the pilot safety, or the pilot drinking water grant, and we knew the new rule was coming, so we've actually been talking about and working on this for probably three years, knowing it was in discussion and probably going to come. So we got with the attorneys and worked with some other communities, because we do not have the right to come onto your property. So it's, we don't, we have the right to come up to the right of way, but we cannot come into your house. So we did create these waiver and release of liabilities that have been reviewed and approved by the attorney. And then we, before we do anything, we come into the homeowner and let him know what we're doing and the processes, along with all the paperwork to know what we're going to do and how to, you know, how to handle your system when we get in and out of there. But then you have to sign that in order for us to do that work. So fortunately, everybody's understood, and they know they're getting a new service line all the way to the meter. And I think we maybe had one that we had a little bit of difficulty. And then the other thing, it has to be the owner. So in a lot of these non-owner occupied, we're trying to get ahold of somebody in California or Florida or, you know, wherever. So that creates, you know, some issues. But we are, and we're keeping all them, and we're working with Jeff in IT with the databases and trying to find a great way to keep this off system digitally and managed. So, because the letters have to go out, and, you know, the Eagle requires so much notification prior to doing anything, and it all has to be documented. So it's, it's been very burdensome on us for sure, but.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Brokehead?
Now, I just wanted to say thank you, because I knew that when I opened my mouth and talked about money, fear was going to come from the back of that room to explain it. about money, fear was going to come from the back of that room to explain it. I think that that makes it better for our citizens when they can hear it. Because I see a couple back there and they doing like me. Okay, I can go for that now. But before, when you talked about it, I heard Jennifer talk about this and that. And at the end line, at the end of the day, you know what my thing is, how much? How much? And from what I'm hearing, I'm going to have to, I don't have to double mortgage my house. I don't have to take out a new mortgage and that's good. So thank you both.
Yeah. And I just want to really reiterate, I mean, the easiest thing for all of us to do would be like, let's contract it out. Let's throw out a bid and let's contract it out. But that isn't the best for the city because now you're paying, I mean, for us to try to get some more staff and buy equipment and do all this in-house to keep the cost one-third to one-half of what it would be to do that, it was, was our very first thought. Now it's a matter of how can we, you know, get it done, so.
Okay. And Councilmember Balls?
Yes. What, you say we doing it in-house. Where, where these people come from? I mean, what was they doing before they was putting in lead pipes?
Wow, they were doing a lot of other work. So some of the other stuff, rat baiting, maybe some valve turning and some of our other programs are getting a little bit delayed as we've had to step up and do this type of work. So, but we have in this budget hired, and I don't know the numbers right offhand, but we've added a new foreman to the lead service line division and we figured right now, I think three, so the, the $3 rate was enough to get three additional employees along with some equipment. And then in the next fiscal year, we're going to budget, because we're figuring we're going to need about two, two crews, not only to do the work, but to do the investigation. So right now, we're already doing the replacements, but we also have a crew that has to go out and start hydro excavating and we have to start creating this inventory of what is our system. I mean, we have our records and all that, but they're only so accurate and that has to be turned in by January 1st of this year. That's kind of like our preliminary, what do we have? But then our confirmed is due in like the next couple of years or so.
Five years.
Five years. So we're working on that as well because that's, I mean, you got to dig up 18 to 30. We're, first of all, we're focusing on the live, the active services right now, not the, not the demolished homes because we know them are the ones that would have the most impact. And out of all of them, any ones that have lead connections, so we're trying to verify them.
So are you starting at the older homes first or are you starting in certain neighborhoods first?
Ah, we're still determining how we're, how we're going to do that. I mean, right now, we're starting in the areas of how we're testing. So we're required by EGO to perform certain, like I think right now, we got 30 sites and they're tier one sites, which we know they're lead services. And then with the first leader and the fifth leader, before all this stuff happened, we were only required to take a first leader sample and that's how you reported your parts per billion level of lead in the water. Now we're required to take a first and fifth. And what the theory behind that is, is the first leader shows you what's in your house plumbing because it's right at the tap.
Right.
But by the time you run three other leaders to it, on average, they're figuring you are now drawing the water in from what would be the connection line in, in the city right of way. Um, and are we just, are these tests haven't been verified by EGO yet, but from our lab, we did our first 30 sites and of the 30, we only had one that was over the action level of 15 parts per billion. I think it might've been right at it. And the fifth leader, the first leader, I think had 13, the second at 15. So right away, we've already scheduled that one for replacement. But, so that's going to be, and then as, as them come off the list, we got to add more. I think the next highest was 12, but we know the state is trying to change the 15 to 12 eventually. So any of them that are anywhere close to 12, we're going to look at replacing them as well and then keep adding. But as they come in, if it's, if it's an emergency, a leak, but we're still, we're still trying to determine how best to schedule the replacement of them.
So how long does it take to replace a line, you know, maybe in one house? What, what you, what you estimate?
It depends, like if it's a short, so everybody knows, I mean, most of the mains aren't right down the center of the road. Most of them are offset because the sewer is normally right down the center. So a short, but then it's dependent on, we don't know where, because if it's under a driveway going to the back of the house, it creates a longer time.
Two days, three days.
If it's under a, no, on average, these guys can do a short in probably four to six hours.
Okay, oh, really?
Anywhere from two to four hours on an extension, the whole line, probably six.
I mean, excavating too?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Okay, okay.
I mean, then it takes time. I mean, I think they do a temporary repair and we have a crew come behind and do the permanent repair based on what type of road it is and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Right, Councilmember Millen?
Yes, I had one other question, probably Mr. Carr would be able to answer this. Preliminary estimates we had on this was that our costs might be roughly half of a contractor cost. It's looking like we're more at like 65% of their cost. Is this mostly experience based? We've got a few hundred under our belt. We've seen it's running a little higher.
Yeah, every, every job they've ever done, because it's part of that pilot grant that we had the $900,000. So every job we did, we knew every man that was on that job, every wrench, the amount of sand they used, what the equipment, everything that was billable, they tracked it on a work order. And so we know actual costs. And then again, it varies. If it's just the service line from the curb stop to the meter, that cost are probably around 1,500. And that was involved. And then when you get to do the whole line now, including to the main, including pavement repairs, you're getting up close to 3,000 because of the pavement costs and the extra pipes. But we've been actually, that's how we feel confident that we can do it because our work, we're actually tracking and we can call, we've been calling other communities and even some of the projects we did where we included that type of work, like when we did Bay Road, we contracted that as part of the job. So when we just did the Bay Road a year or two ago, well, before they did the pavement, we came in and did the water main and we replaced all the services to the meter. And I don't know exactly, but I think every one of them, total connections was somewhere between six and $10,000 or more. So we're confident in that, you know, we're somewhere at least half, if not better than what it would be. And then that's, you know, moving forward, right now, I don't know if we could get a contractor to even come in here and start doing 480 to 700 lines a year. I mean, and then if they, some contractor out there thinking they can start to amp up to do the work, what kind of quality work are you going to get? We also control the quality as well by doing this.
Thank you. Mayor Brotem.
I just want to ask this question. With the demolition that was done in the green zone and the east side, that was 900 something houses. And a lot of those houses were old. How much damage do we think that's over there in that area?
Damage as far as cost.
In terms of how many of those houses, I know you told on a lot of them because a lot of them are down. And so like I said, if it's one house, are you looking at those? I know that the question was asked, where are you looking? Or wet Mike or Councilman Boss asked, where you starting? And so we know that most of the houses were demoed on the east side, south end and some other areas. So are we looking at those areas that had a big hit with houses being tore down?
Not necess, I mean, it's.
I think Phil was, you know, what he said before is we do have houses that are higher risk that have people living in them now. And those are the same houses that we were required to be testing with before. So they're, they're testing those now under the new method and those will probably be the first one because there are people there drinking that water.
Okay.
So that's the first step. Other than, the first ones we did were, if you remember, because I know some individuals contacted council members, we did lines that were already leaking.
Right.
So we used those as testing methods and, and did them at our cost, at city cost. So those were the first ones. And then we're also doing like Bay Road, we did all of those because we had the street taken up and that's the most efficient way to do it. And then you don't want to go back later and dig those streets up. So those are ones that we do on a continuing basis and then they'll be, go through those higher risk ones and then they'll move on from there.
Tim's exactly right. So the first ones are going to be any that we know we have the lead and we're getting, and, and they've been, the water plant maintenance and survey have been doing tests throughout the city for years. So they kind of have a general idea of where they might through the sampling program and seeing higher contents of lead. So we'll probably focus on them areas, but we're definitely working with engineering to do water main and the connections and services in advance of their construction project. So we don't have, I mean, I hate to have a brand new road and then a year from now, we test high in lead and I got to go dig the road up. So we're, and some of the milling paves or the chipping seals you're seeing, we, we may or may not depend on if we can get our crews in, in, ahead of their project in advance, but.
I just had a question about the future. I mean, maybe it's not for right now, but if we ever want to look at doing infill housing or things like that, I mean, how does that factor into this? Because I mean, it was, she said that to get, how do, how do we lower the cost is to get more billable units? So if we ever wanted to look at development for the future in certain areas and things like that, I mean, that's going to be a greater cost, correct? Because we're going to have to start with a whole new line, right? Did I hear you correct?
Uh, well, no, I mean, if you're going to have a development go on, say somewhere on Michigan Avenue, I mean, no, for the most part, everything they put in is already going to have to meet the no lead rule. So everything will be copper more than likely. I mean, there are some other, and we only allow certain, but they will be tying on to the existing main, which if, if it's cast iron, if it's AC cement, if it's, you know, all of that stuff, as long as it's non-lead, that they'll just be tying on to that main with a ductile iron or a PVC or HDB pipe of some sort, which will meet all of the ego requirements. But, so, and then I mean, I don't know if you, what you're trying to ask, but I think at that point, then if that's happening, I don't know, this is stuff we have to talk about, I don't know if we would then, we wouldn't be looking at incorporating that business or whatever into paying into this.
Yes.
Into this fee.
Okay. I'll come meet with you.
Any other questions?
If, if I answered your question.
Councilmember Forbes?
Just a comment, I'm just really pleased that we're keeping it in-house. I think that for all the reasons that, that you specified, but also because we can ensure that those folks are treated fairly and good working conditions and fair pay and all of that. And so I'm just really pleased that that's the route we're going.
I, I, I don't really have a question, but I have a comment for the public so they understand a little bit of this. You mentioned that this is, we're not funded by the state. And that's a really critical factor because of two things. First of all, it's new rules that require new action, not only, well, first of all, it requires it for our connection, what traditionally has been the water connection up to the turnoff valve. But they've gone beyond that and have now included private property as something the city has to replace.
Yep.
So not only have they failed to fund this in general, but they've now added to that this private area where we have higher risk because it's private property. We're going in through all kinds of, whether it's shrubbery, trees, decorations, the house foundations, you're for, they're forcing us to do that. They're also forcing us to do it in a way that either requires cooperation of the public or if we don't get a particular homeowner's cooperation, we're still required to do it, but yet there's no way to do it. It, it, it's something that if, I think the manager earlier mentioned the fact that we recently had a decision from the Court of Appeals that said that they haven't even been funding communities properly in the first place, and that's revenue sharing, if I remember correctly, is that correct? So they have not been funding us properly for years as it is. And now they're putting new, um, new mandates, new orders on all the communities in the state to do things without the additional funds. That's very important for the public to understand because the step that Mayor Protim Moore was asking about, the cost, is a cost that our citizens individually now, every homeowner has to bear. The state isn't making any effort to try and compensate what they're forcing us to do. And that's really important because no one has been addressing your legislatures, or I shouldn't say no one has, we aren't doing it effectively enough, is the way I want to put it, to make the legislators understand that they have a responsibility here. When they impose a burden like this on communities, they have a responsibility to pay for it and they aren't doing it, especially when we find out that they haven't even been funding us properly in the first place, which is what we believed, it's what we expected the court should do, and it finally it has. So my suggestion is every member, every person here, every citizen here should be talking to your legislators and saying, why are you doing this? A, without funding it. B, with imposing a burden on the city to do something in, on private property. And C, how do you expect us to accept that responsibility? I mean, yes, we get waivers, but we still, there's still risk. So these are all things that the public needs to understand, that it's the state doing this. It's wonderful that we have an order to correct lead lines, but the state is doing this on the backs of communities that can't afford it. And that's the real issue from the city standpoint. There's perhaps, and, and what they aren't easily, what we aren't easily able to figure now is the future cost. Over 25 years, we're estimating, I think, $60 million for this project right now? Is that ballpark?
Uh, yeah, a little less than that, but.
Little, well, in, in 20 years, it, it won't be 60 million, it'll be 60 billion for one year. I mean, when you think about the cost going up. So the estimates now, quite frankly, are probably way too low. And it's all placed the burden by the state on this community, on a community that already is hampered financially terribly. So the public needs to understand that. Thank you. Any other questions or comments by councilmembers? Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. So our second presentation is from Tom Beckley, who is the senior manager at Reftellis, and it's the water rate update.
Mayor, Mayor Protim, councilmembers, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to present the findings of our financial plan and water rate update for the coming three years. So I'm going to talk tonight about factors influencing water rates, just some of the factors that influence water rates in general, talk about our recent water rate history here in Saginaw, and then present the financial plan for the utility for fiscal years 20 through 24. So we're actually going to show you a five-year financial plan. But ultimately, what's being proposed is three years of rates and then coming back after three years, which is, you'll see when we talk about recent rate history is, you know, kind of the approach we've taken for about the past 10 years. And then talk about the proposed rates and the impacts. And I'll have a little more detail on the impact of what we've been talking about for the last half hour, the light service line replacement program and the cost and the impact on our retail customers of that. So factors, when we look at our water rates here in Saginaw, there's a few things. One is the water utility is a self-stated enterprise. So it's, basically it's a business owned by the citizens of Saginaw. And of course, as you are all probably well aware, not only does it serve the citizens of Saginaw, but we also provide wholesale service throughout this entire region. And so it, it is a, it is a large enterprise that's important to Saginaw as well as the region as a whole. So one of the challenges we face here is declining per capita usage. And I think it's important to point out that this is a trend we see throughout the United States. Although of course Saginaw has its challenges, this is not something unique to Saginaw or even unique to cities facing financial challenges. Even in, in wealthy cities and even in, in prospering cities, we are seeing declining per capita usage. And this creates a challenge with water rates because as you're well aware, a big part of water rates is a volume rate. You pay more the more you use. And so if our consumption is declining 2% a year, just to break even, we have to raise rates 2% a year if it was entirely volume based, just to break even. volume-based, just to break even. Then, of course, as you know, everything the water utility does faces the same inflationary pressures as every other cost that we face. So this is a challenge that utilities are facing throughout the United States and that we see here as well. But I think it's important to point out that this is not just because of some of the challenges that Saginaw faces. Of course, we also need reinvestment in our infrastructure. And again, this is something that a lot of cities face, is out of sight, out of mind with water infrastructure, especially, you know, there's a lot of underground infrastructure. Of course, we have the water plant here, beautiful facility, and it has a lot of needs to make, to ensure safe and reliable drinking water for the citizens of Saginaw as well as this region. But the underground infrastructure, we need to continue to reinvest in those assets to maintain safe and reliable service for the citizens of Saginaw. And finally, we have these wholesale customer contracts, and these are commitments we've made to the region to continue to provide them water. But it also provides a source of revenue for the citizen, for the inside-city customers, because we receive rate of return on the investment that the city of Saginaw has made in these assets. We receive that from the outside-city customers. So, it's not as if we're doing it out of the kindness of our hearts, although it is important for this region as a whole. But the citizens of Saginaw do receive benefit from that through lower rates than they otherwise would have, because we do receive what's called a rate of return on the investment that the citizens of Saginaw have made to provide service to these non-owner customers. So a little bit about the history. In 2005, and I don't recall how many of you have been around since then, there were some challenges in the relationships with the wholesale customers. As I've mentioned several times, we provide service throughout this region. And there was a study done, and there were some challenges to that study. And so, that's actually when we were first engaged by the city, and we came in, and we helped them repair those relationships, and we were able to establish, to finally move forward and get buy-in from those customers. And we established the rate methodology that has been used since then. And so, that's the 2006, 2007, we developed the new cost service model for the city of Saginaw that included all those wholesale customers. And we had a lot of meetings with the wholesale customers, and we were able to repair those relationships. And we've, and we have meetings with the wholesale customers every time we update these rates. So, we've been coming here and meeting with wholesale customers and working with them collaboratively. And so, in 2008, we implemented a three-year rate plan for fiscal years 2010 through 2012. In 2013, fiscal years, this is a little confusing, because that would actually be fiscal years '14 and '15, there were no rate adjustments. And then we developed a new plan, a new three-year plan in 2015 that covered fiscal years '16 through '18. And then again, in '19, we were able to, we had sufficient reserves that we were able to have no rate adjustment. And so now, here tonight, going forward, we're presenting, again, a five-year financial plan, so we can see where we're heading for the next five years, where we believe we're heading, and then proposing three years' worth of rates. So the utility study, the utility rate study answers three primary questions. How much money do we need? The financial plan. What's our overall revenue requirement for the water utility? Who should pay? Cost of service. In other words, how should these costs be split between our inside-city retail customers and our outside-city wholesale customers? And finally, how should they pay? The rate design, how we actually recover those costs once we've determined the cost of service. So the overall objectives of our study are to maintain the financial health of this utility, because this utility is critical, obviously, to the, to the city of Saginaw as well as the region. Provide funds for reinvestment and reinvesting in these assets, as I mentioned, that are critical to maintaining safe and reliable service. And then determine fair and equitable rates, you know, split between retail as well as wholesale customers. So overall, the financial plan, we forecast expenditures. We look at our operation maintenance expenses, and we forecast what we believe are reasonable inflationary increases on these, as well as additional costs that may be incurred. And same for capital. And on capital, there's two main ways that we pay for capital. There's what we call rate-funded, which is we're going to pay cash for it. And of course, for a lot of larger projects, we will issue debt for that. And debt is actually important. You know, debt isn't such a dirty word when it comes to water utilities, because when we build an asset that has a 50-year service life, using debt actually makes sense, because what happens is, there are people who aren't even born yet, that will be citizens of the city of Saginaw in 25 years, that will receive benefit from these assets we're building today. And by using debt to pay for them, we actually ensure that those customers in 25 years will pay for those assets that are providing service to them that we build today. So, especially, you know, when we talk about utilities, some people think debt is a dirty word, but when it comes to utilities, it actually promotes what we call intergenerational equity, which ensures that people who don't even live here yet, but will live here in the future, pay for assets that we're going to build today that will provide service to them in the The next step is we forecast revenue at existing rates. So this provides us a baseline, so we, and I'll show you this graphically here in a couple of slides. And then we determine what revenue adjustments are necessary to be able to provide for our overall revenue requirement. So there's a lot of information on here, but we just wanted to kind of give you an overview of what the capital improvement plan looks like over the net, over the five-year forecast period. And again, the rates we're proposing are for the fiscal years '20 through '22, so the first three years. And you can see, over that first three-year period, we have about $28 million in total capital improvements. You'll see the very bottom row of that before the totals is the service line replacement program that Jennifer and Phil just spent so much time talking about. And as I mentioned, in 2020, the year we're now in that just started on July 1st, we're going to have about half, the program about half-funded for the full year, $636,000. And then we plan on increasing that to the full funding next fiscal year, starting July 1st, 2020. And then that'll go up to about $1.33 million, and then there's inflationary increases moving on forward for that. So when we look at the operating expenses for the water utility, currently, they're just over $15 million. And basically, this shows what the operating expenses are projected to be over the forecast period. Again, it's basically just inflationary increases on these operating expenses. As I said, the water utility faces the same inflationary pressures as any other business. And then when we add on top of that the capital improvement plan, so you see the bottom blue line remains here, and then we have three pieces to the capital, basically, how we pay for capital. The green one is existing debt service. So these are, this is debt that the water utility has already issued and that we've agreed to pay. Then the purple one is proposed new debt to pay for some of the capital improvements in the, in the capital improvement plan I showed you. And finally, we do have some rate-funded capital, including the lead service line program. The lead service line program, basically, is meant to be a self-sufficient fee on its own, and as Phil and Jennifer mentioned, it'll be a separate fund. So, whatever money we generate from that fee will go into a fund, and then that will be used to pay for the employees and the materials and the equipment used to replace the lead service lines. So, the red line, excuse me, I guess it's orange. The orange line on here is how much revenue we would generate if we kept rates the same. And you don't see it too much on here, but that is slowly decreasing over time, again, because, in part, because there is a decline in per capita usage. And so, the rates we're going to talk about a little more, the proposed, the overall proposed revenue adjustment is on the blue line, and that's what we're proposing, that the utility increase its revenues by each year to be able to fund the capital improvement. And you'll see, it's actually a little below the top of the bar. You know, right now, there is some fund balance in the utility that we will continue to draw down at a slow pace, but we do have built into the financial plan maintaining a reasonable level of reserves to ensure that if we have a cool, wet summer and revenues fall a little short, that we're still going to be able to continue our operations and provide safe and reliable service. So when we look at the water cost of service, this chart kind of summarizes our cost of service. And it breaks it down between inside-city and outside-city. And so, you can see, the current revenue, we generate about $18.3 million. And so, in 2020, with that rate increase, we talked about that would go to $20.1 million. And then, in 2021, it would be $22 million, and then 2022 would be approaching $24 million. Now, there is a, and I'll point this out, the reason it says 10% on here is because of the lead service line replacement program, because what we were looking at before, that seven-and-a-half percent increase, is if things were status quo, you know, kind of before the lead service line. And then the lead service line is kind of an added layer on top of that. So, breaking this down to what this actually means to our customers. So, the top, the top chart on here shows the breakdown of our inside-city service rates. And then the bottom shows what is a typical residential bill. You know, what we use as a typical residential bill, which is a 5/8 inch meter using 6,000 gallons per month. And so, there's three main components, well, there's two components to the bill right now, which is our base charge and our volume charge. And then, with the lead service line program, that's going to be a third component to the bill. And so, right now, our base charge is $5.61 a month, and then at 6,000 gallons, you pay $21.72 for that usage in a given month. And so, in 2020, we're actually not proposing increasing the existing rates at all. We actually, the increase, the overall revenue increase necessary would come from the outside-city customers only. However, there is the addition of the lead service line program, a $3.09 per month, which is what we're proposing the rate be for that program in 2020, the fiscal year that just started. Then in the following fiscal year, that $3.09 would go up to $6.53, and then we would start to see some increases in the base and the volume charge for residential customers as well as our, as some of the costs increase. And so you can see, in 2020, a typical, single, typical, single-family residential customer would see an increase in their bill of $3.09, which is entirely the lead service line program. Whereas in '21, it'll be a little larger, $4.71, which is still 2/3 lead service line program, and then only 1/3 of that is due to increase in cost of our kind of legacy, you know, water operations. And then $1.50 in 2022, which in that case is a little bit of inflationary increase on the service line program, and then the rest due to increase in the base and volume charge. And this is a breakdown over the, you know, kind of where we're going, where the rates have been the past two years, 2018, 2019 are the past two years. And you can see, again, there was no increase in rates from '18 to '19. And then even when we go to '20, the only increase we're proposing is on the lead service line portion. '21, we're proposing an increase on both lead service line as well as the base line portion, and same on 2022. With 2022, we get into only inflationary increases on the lead service line program. So of course, a question that always comes up is, well, how do we compare? And this, and this can be useful, you know, because this is something people mention. And so, the light blue line on the left is where our existing rates are. And so you can see among these comparable communities in the state of Michigan, our rates are relatively low. Wyoming and Kalamazoo have lower rates. They've managed to, and I'm actually pretty familiar with Wyoming. I've done studies for them before. They have the advantage of that they, they do have a lot of wholesale customers, much like we do, but they're in a little bit our position than we are. But, and then with the increase for '20, you can see that we're still kind of, pretty much right there in the middle. And of course, what we can expect is, over time, all these cities will have the same pressures we have and be increasing their rates as well. So when we get to '21 and '22, their rates will be rising as well. And not all these cities have done what they need to do, because these cities will all have lead and copper rule increases in cost as well. Some of them more so than others. So that's the end of my prepared presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Councilmembers, questions?
Excuse me. Yes, good evening. I had one question for you, and then we'll actually have a session on the rates themselves later. In your consultation on the rate study here, were you given instruction to create a separate line item as the service line replacement program, or is that your professional judgment? That's the best way to handle that, have a separate line item?
We worked collaboratively with city staff, Phil, Kim, Paul, and discussed various options, you know, and the rules were in flux, because Paul and I were having a discussion. You know, the rules changed even as they were being developed, because at first it was, the city will have to pay up to, up to, you know, its line demarcation, then it may or may not get the money from a customer, whereas now, the rule that was actually implemented is the city has to pay for everything, as was mentioned by Phil. And so, we spent a lot of time discussing different options. I mean, but ultimately, we felt this was the most transparent way to do it. To do it is, this is a per-month, per-customer charge on the bill. And I think, you know, we believe it's a good approach, you know, given, especially the dynamics of the city of Saginaw and the needs that we have. But it's not the only, you could roll it into the base charge, you could roll it into the volume charge. It's somewhat up to the discretion of the city on how that is to be recovered. But it's not up to our discretion to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Protim?
So, money is coming out of the, come on back up, Phil, because I know you're coming. So, in other words, we're going to offset. Is that what I'm hearing? With the funds from, the increase from the water to help pay for some of this, or no?
The actual, the line item that we have in the fee for the replacement?
Right.
That's supposed to fund the entire replacement, because everything will come from the enterprise fund for water. So, that specific line item, that will cover the cost. The only way we could pay for it is from the enterprise system, so it has to be built into the rate, because we don't have money in the general fund to do that. We did talk about it for a long time prior to setting up the fees, and we, Phil, Kim, and I did think the best way to do it was to have that separate line item, so citizens know that this is why your fee is increasing, not, we're not just increasing because of additional new debt or additional employees. It's because of these changes in the lead and copper rules. And hopefully, that goes to what the mayor suggested, that everybody can contact your legislature and the governor's office and say, hey, look, this is costing me X number of dollars a year. So, help us out. So if we do get, if we did get additional funds in the future, then that can be a way, could be a way to offset that, but likely, we would build it into our next rate when we do the next three years.
Okay. I just want a clarification, so that we all was on the same page. So, I mean, I take out a lot. I'm just joking.
Councilmember Ballz?
Yeah, I'd like to know, who do we service in our community? Do we service Frank and Bertrand? Do we service these guys? And what's the price, their prices compared to city of Saginaw prices to the people who we service?
Well, you have to, most of their prices are higher, because they're more rural systems, and so they, it's even, they're more spread out than the city of Saginaw, as of course, that used to, we used to be less spread out than we are now. But they're more rural systems. I don't have that data available. I mean, I could tell you, they pay us less than we charge our customers, but you have to keep in mind, that's because we're selling it to them wholesale, and we're not providing local distribution. We're not, you know, basically, they receive service off our transmission mains, our big pipes. And so they receive service off big pipes, and so basically, they don't pay for the small pipes that serve all our retail customers. But then, they're responsible for providing retail service to their customers. We don't, also don't have to deal with their customers calling us, well, maybe sometimes they do, but in general, and then sending them, you know, all their customers' bills. So they have like the whole layer of retail service on top of what we charge them. But when we do the cost service study, what we're making sure is, for the same level of service, they pay the same thing as our, as our inside-city customers, plus they pay the rate of return. So basically, they pay the same as our customers do for the same service, plus they pay the rate of return, which is the return that our inside-city customers receive for us providing service to these outside-city customers.
I just wanted to, I was, I had heard that they do pay less for the amount of water they get. And I couldn't understand that, if we pushing it to them, you know, we using our power to push it out there and everything else, and then we paying the cost?
I haven't prepared that, only because those cities are, you know, obviously, they're all much smaller than Saginaw, and that's why, like on the, on the survey that we have, we don't use them. It's comparisons, because they're so much smaller than us, and, you know, all the cities we serve are, you know, half our size, much less.
They get a lower rate because they're smaller?
No, 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 no.
They will have, they are paying, as Tom said, they're paying the same rate for the water, and then they're paying that rate of return. However, whatever composes their system, that makes up the rest of their rate. So, whatever composes the rest of our system could be higher than ours, because we have a different system, plus we have legacy costs, you know, the OPEB and the pension costs. All of that goes into our rates, whereas you may have a smaller system, comparatively, they're paying more maybe for the water, but they have a smaller distribution system, and they have less operating costs, so their rate is different.
I'm just saying, if we the one that got the power, you know, I'm just saying, somehow we need to be charged a little bit more to help take care of our legacy costs, because our legacy costs, the water's going out there, and our legacy cost is tied in there, so why can't we get some of our legacy costs back?
There's, there's other parts of the water agreements that are outside the water rate study that Saginaw receives benefit as well. That, so, we're only engaged to look at the water utility, but there are other arrangements, basically, when we sign the new contracts, they do provide, that I will admit I'm not as familiar with, that we do receive other benefits by providing service to these customers, other financial benefits.
I'd like to find out more about how this runs, because, I mean, if we got contracts with these people, and they're paying less than we're paying, then...
They pay the same, they pay the same for the same services, plus the rate of return. But you have to remember that they, we do not provide retail service to them. So, our rates are different, because our rates include the local distribution, and customer service, and meter reading billing and collection, and we don't, and we don't provide that service to them. So it's basically, it's like, if our rate is this, there's this piece that they pay the same for, plus they pay rate of return, and then they have to do this piece on their own. And most of them, that piece is bigger. But I, some of them, it may be smaller, but some of them, it may also be because they're subsidizing it from their general fund.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You have a question, Councilmember Forbes? Did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very helpful. Okay. That concludes the management update.
That's all you got? You want more? You want more?
Not tonight.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on.
Here, we are now at the consent agenda.
It's boiled for a minute. It's over now.
Calm down, please. Calm down. We're at the consent agenda. Now, the agenda has been available at City Hall, on the city website, and on SGTV, channel 191. Are there exceptions to be noted by the clerk?
Exception on number 12, please.
Number 12. Any other exceptions?
Two.
Two? Two and 12. Any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the remaining items?
11, too.
All right, 11, so 2, 11, and 12. Move to approve?
Support.
All right, it's been moved. All right, it's been moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the remaining non-accepted items. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Carry. All right, Madam Clerk?
Item number two by Councilmember Balls, to approve the purchase with AKT Peerless for $95,000 for inspection of environmentally hazard materials for residential and commercial demolitions.
My question is that we, we, we paying them $95,000 to do the inspections, on future inspections, are we just gonna give them the money and we, how'd that work?
So for each demolition, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, for each demolition, the company would inspect the property, look for all the, the bad stuff, environmental hazards, do the testing on it, asbestos, could be any number of things.
Right.
It's a, it's per-property basis, so, no, we're not just writing a check for 95,000. We do that based on the quantities of items that are tested at each individual address.
So you taking the $95,000 and you gonna put that in a pool, and then as they need it, they will pull it out?
As they, as they do projects, we will pay for those projects.
Just for a year or, or more?
It's for, the 95,000 is for one year.
Okay. So there's a possibility they may not use it, all of it?
Sure, absolutely.
Anything further, Councilmember Balls?
If they don't use all that, they come back in a general fund, do we stay in a special fund for the...
Depending on which fund it came from, it could be either general fund or, or community development block grant funds.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion on, on number two?
Some move.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve item number two. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.
Item number 11, approve the purchase with Ferguson Enterprises for $321,956 for no lead brass fittings for the maintenance and service division. That was Councilmember Balls.
So, so you do the same thing, you take all this money and you put it in a pot, and if they use it, then you put it back in general fund, or you keep it and buy a truck with it later on, or what?
No, this is the enterprise fund again, it's the water fund, so, and this, we don't, I mean, it's what we plan to use within the year, but we only buy it as we need it, we don't inventory all of it, and then, so, but it's what we, and then a lot of it's now with the addition of the new lead copper rule and all of the additional parts we're gonna need, so.
So this is an enterprise fund anyway, so we shouldn't even, the city don't have to worry about it coming out of our pocket necessarily then, right?
Well, it's part of what Mr. Beckley just spoke about, where it's part, it's part of your water rate. So this stuff, I, so when you approved the budget however many months ago, that is what the rate was built around, not just that individual budget, but like a five-year plan, you know, and we got the proposed rates, that's, that's one of the operating expenses within the 591, the water fund.
I mean, the reason why I'm asking these questions, man, because I see, you know, now the money we spending, and I would, and I would hope that someday maybe we can get a parks division or something like that, and if we taking all this money and putting it over here, and then putting it back later on, or either you find some money, you even bought you a $50,000 truck somewhere, you know, and I say, we could've been using that for a parks division or something like that, because I noticed that the, the best cities that I ever been to, they have beautiful parks and beautiful...
I agree.
Graveyards. I'm serious. I'm just putting it out there like that, so I'm just saying, if we spending money and putting it here just to be saving it, then Councilman Balls wanna know about it because I, I want us to do something else with that money, we just sitting there, then it's sitting in a pot for something later on.
This one, you're right on this one, this is, this is all enterprise fund, so this money can't be used for anything but the water. Water Shop does a really good job with their inventory management, so they're only ordering what they need. If it's, if they need less than that to do the work in the year, then they won't spend those funds, it'll carry over in the, the fund balance for the enterprise fund.
Well, thank you. I want you guys to know how I feel about our parks and our graveyards.
Anything further on item number 11? Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Madam Clerk?
Item number 12, approve the amendment to the city fees and rate schedule to increase the fees and rates for the water department. Councilmember Millen.
Thank you. Phil, and some of these questions may end up going to Kim, the two things I wanted to talk about are, obviously the separate rider for the service line replacement. In talking with our consultant, it appears a portion of that, and we didn't have a number because I'm, I don't think we're approaching it that way, portion of that will end up being for working on these non-active lines, going back to the main, to the corporate stop, and removing and stopping that.
Eventually.
Okay, so clearly that's not our initial focus.
Nope.
But, what concerns me is that part of this charge seems like it should be rolled into the, the base, the readiness to serve charge. If this is a 20 or 25-year program, it's a basic cost of business to us now. It's not a separate item, unless we're assuming that, that there might be a change, not assuming, unless we're making it a separate item, so it's easier to approach in the future if there's any changes. Would that be a correct way to...
I think the project does end because in the guidelines you have 25 years, Phil, is it?
Well, 20, if you get to prove this part of your asset management, you can go to 25. We haven't done that yet.
So you have 20 years to do the project, so we better be done in 20 years, and then I would say we won't, we don't have that line anymore. We'll still have a, a fund in the enterprise fund for those lines that we didn't replace. Hopefully they'll come up over the 20 years, but the project will have an end. Eventually, I mean, you, you'll, you'll have all of those components out, they could, you're right, they could, after that, could they run across something? I assume they could if, if they didn't catch it, but that would just be in the normal course of operation.
I, I guess part of the other thing I, I didn't see, and there's a lot of numbers I could've missed it. By Mr. Carwatt's description, some of what used to be regular maintenance disappears and becomes part of the service line replacement program. We can't go in and do what we did at times because now we have to expose and make sure what's on both sides of a curb stop, and if it has lead or galvanized on either side, we do the whole thing. And so, did, do we reflect any savings in service and maintenance that now shifts over to the...
Yeah, what you'll see is, is we added the new line, lead service line replacement, but we're also keeping our existing budgets, which I don't have the numbers in front of me, but 591, 47...
Yeah, that's fine, I looked at it.
Which is, you're, we're gonna keep that, but what you'll probably see is that'll probably start to come down, and that's still, that's all part of the rate as well, but it's within that line item budget, but that'll probably start to come down if and when as we do more of these lead service line replacements. So it is, it is, I guess to answer your question, it's not clearly shown, but it is kind of reflected in what that...
For the purpose of a three-year budget projection, a rate projection, we, we don't estimate it changing that quickly.
Correct.
But, say over the life of 20 years...
Right. We'll know more in the next one to three years of exactly where we're at and what, how many we're getting a year, and, you know, we're kind of in our test year right now, so, but you, you should see, I mean, the more of them we're doing, the less of the standard maintenance you'll see, then what'll happen is if we budget a certain cost, if we're not doing it, you won't see it in there. So even if it's budgeted, it won't be expensed, and as we talked earlier about Councilman Balls' issue, it'll go back in as a, into the, into the fund to be. But the nice thing about keeping it separate with the lead service line too, is, as the mayor said, if the state ever comes in and says, you know, hey, we're gonna fund a portion of this, well, we'll know exactly what we spent by keeping it that way versus having it just thrown in with a bunch of other stuff, because then how can you now accurately reflect? We're trying to just accurately reflect the, all of these costs, revenue and expenditures, so if something does eventually come from the state, we will have better documentation to say, hey, we either gonna reimburse or now, you know, have it as part of our next rate study, we can better show that.
Unrelated, but part of the new charge, the new fee structure, did we previously have readiness to serve charge for premises outside the city? We just had two-inch and above, and now we're creating separate sizes?
I, I can't, I can't, I couldn't speak, I don't have that in front of me right now, I couldn't...
Okay.
It's right here, Phil. He was referring, we're adding sizes.
Yeah, I think that's probably to just accommodate for the cost for the different meter sizes, because there are two, three, four, six, eight, 10s.
So previously we just...
We're just updating, as part of the change, we're gonna make some, some positive modifications to some of the existing stuff. Outside of the water rate.
Yeah. Last question about adding the line item, the service line. What plan might we have for additional customer education, shall we say, or is it just gonna appear on the next water bill or the October water bill, or whenever the first one is, it's on? Will we have an expanded billing that time with some explanation of this charge?
Well, that would be January, I think is when it would, that would...
January is when it would begin?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll probably do some press releases and information on our website and Facebook, that the actual bill, we're so limited on space.
Well, I know, that's why I wondered.
We're at the max, so we'll have to find other ways to do that.
Okay. Maybe we should simply have on to blame your state legislator.
That will fit.
Well, I think that's the questions I had, and, and if you think this is gonna be the best approach to doing this, I can see what you mean about, if there's changes in the future, we have a fully itemized billing then, it's not rolled into something else. And those demolished, non-active services, they're the tail end of the project, they don't happen this immediately. Not within the three-year period we're talking about.
The demolished properties?
Yeah, yeah, no, where them are gonna be like, the potential for that, nobody's drinking out of it, you know what I mean? What Jennifer was saying, eventually if you have a vacuum effect in your main and there has been water to lead contact, it can kind of draw it back in through that.
You're saying that'll be the tail end of the project?
Yes, that'll be the very tail end of the project.
I got you.
It's my question.
Unless we have a road project going, and then we would get them out of there in advance so we don't have to come back and cut the road, so.
Any other questions on item 12? Is there a motion on item 12, Councilmember Millen?
If we're done with questions, yes, I move that we approve item 12.
Support. It's been moved and seconded. Oh, does there, anything else you also? It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, you are now at Board's Commission Committee Reports.
Are there any reports of city boards and commissions? We must have some.
Nope. We got the minute.
None? None? All right, we'll move on.
Very good, Mayor, that takes us to the appointment of board and commission members.
We do have one.
Right? And it's council reappointment of Kevin Rooker to the Historic History Commission with a term to expire July 30th, 2022.
And we're sure he wants to do this, huh? Yes, is there a motion to...
I'll move.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to reappoint Kevin Rooker to the Historic District Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry.
Next is ordinance introduction. Our first one is to add chapter 118, prohibition of marijuana establishments and facilities of Title 11 business regulations.
Is there a motion? I'm moved to establish that. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Yes.
All right, discussion?
I don't know if this is typo or they done this on purpose, but I don't know if you spell marijuana like that.
It's actually, there's clear four spellings that are allowed.
Never seen it with an H.
Again, you can blame your state legislature for that one. That's, that's how it's been spelled. When the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act first came out, it carried through from proposal one, so just for consistency. We spell it with the H to be consistent with the state law, even though J is...
I'm just saying, I thought maybe they're playing a trick on us, trying to give us something else. I don't know how to vote on that. But, but I do have another question on, on this too, sir.
Yes.
Prohibit the establishment of these facilities, I didn't know if that was the motion that we was making to prohibit them, I thought that we just gonna lay it over to, for we can vote on it within, in the 12 months.
Now, this was based on the specific motion to, it is, if you look at it, it has the, the provision...
Sunset provision?
Yeah, the, the, the provision for 12 months, it expires. That is, if you look at it, it's...
So in other words, what you're saying is that we just gonna lay this over for a year and then we come back to...
No, you can't call it a layover, because that's a specific term in Robert's Rules of Orders. We're not laying it over, we're, we're offering this, or we're introducing this at ordinance, which we will, once we, if it is introduced, we will lay it over for two weeks, and then we will vote on it again to implement it in two weeks. Now, what you're talking about of a layover is not, it's a sunset provision, that it'll be effective for 12 months, and then it dies if there's been no prior action.
Okay.
Yes.
But that is not gonna be it, we are gonna do some actions.
Well, we're working, yeah, but bottom line is, the 12 months is the sunset provision. Okay. Now, have we made a motion, is there a motion?
Yes, you have a motion.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, further discussion then?
Down there.
Yes, Councilman Ostash?
On section B under 118.01, we are opting out of the MARTMA, which is the recreational, but also, there's a, medical marijuana is also in this section here too, so I'm kind of wondering why that's there. I did go read on the Michigan Municipal League's website, five other cities that have opted out like us, but they don't have that in there at all, so I'm, I'm confused.
Well, the opt-out language is really in 118.01A, that's your opt-out language. 118.01B is really more of a reminder statement to anyone reading the law, that, or the ordinance, that facilities and establishments, if there is anything that exists currently in the city of Saginaw that purports to be operating under either of those laws, it's doing so unlawfully.
Okay. Councilmember Forbes?
So that is to say that if we were to move forward on either recreational or medical, that that, that statement would not impede that, that action.
That's correct. That, that doesn't preclude an opt-in on either, and in fact, if, if the city were to move forward on an opt-in ordinance, that, that ordinance in and of itself would probably contain a similar statement that anybody who's unlicensed is operating unlawfully.
Okay, thank you.
Any, yes, Councilmember...
Just thank you, because I was confused, and so that helps me to clarify that, thanks.
Okay, any further questions or discussion or anything? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's have a roll call. Well, is there any opposed, first of all, any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. One, two opposed. All right, so let's have a roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Millen?
Aye.
Councilmember Balls?
Aye.
Councilmember Ostash?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
No.
Councilmember Bench?
Yes.
Mayor Protenmore?
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
We have six yes and three no. Motion is approved.
Good. The mo, the ordinance will now be laid over under the charge of provision.
Okay, Mayor, our second ordinance tonight is to amend sections 151, 001 through 151.117 of chapter 151, property maintenance regulations of Title 15 land usage.
We need a motion to introduce, some move?
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any discussion? Any discussion? I have one comment that should be brought up, and that is, for those who have reviewed it in section... Yes, 117. The, there will need to be a renumbering by elimination of the first subsection of of that one D, there will need to be a renumbering, and that will be done at the time of the, or after the layover, it'll be in the proposed one at that time, so that, it just wasn't done here, will need to be done. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Mayor, we are now at resolutions. Our first one is to recognize Ashrat Company as a nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining verbal gaming license.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Support.
Support, moved and supported, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's Carrie.
Second resolution, approve the request from Generous Entertainment LLC located at 110 South Hamilton Street for outdoor service to be held in conjunction with a 2008 Class C licensed business.
Is there a motion to adopt? So move.
Support.
Moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Without knowing the address by heart, what is Generous Entertainment commonly known as, which business is this?
Retro Rocks.
Retro Rocks, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Our third resolution is to approve the request from Generous Entertainment LLC located at 110 South Hamilton Street to permit the service of alcoholic beverages on public property.
Needs to be a motion to adopt?
So move.
Support.
Moved and supported, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
Mayor, that takes us to miscellaneous business.
Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry, no.
Our first item there is to designate an official representative of the city and an alternate for the 2019 Annual Michigan Municipal League Meeting.
We need a motion to designate?
So move.
Who would you designate? All right.
The mayor, the mayor is normally, it's normally the mayor and the mayor protem.
So are you moving the mayor and mayor protem?
No.
Okay.
I am moving the mayor, and because officially now I am the president of the municipal league, I'll be up front anyways, so we need two votes out of Saginaw, so with that, we have to pick a person.
We'll do a second motion.
Right, so I do a motion that...
Motion on the table is to approve the mayor as the primary designate.
Right.
Support. It's been moved and seconded.
Yeah, including the alternate in the...
No, we'll do that as a second motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Any discussion, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, is there a second motion? Can someone make a motion? If not, I will, then, I would move, I would move if Mr. Bryant would be, Councilmember Bryant would be willing to be, designate the alternate, that he'd be the alternate.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I don't mind with taking Mr. Bryant, but I think we should have went B-A instead of B-Y first, but we'll let him.
Are you going?
B-A.
Did you want to be the alternate?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Are you going?
Yeah.
Are you going to the convince, or the... All right, okay, it is now.
Thank you very much.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, and there's no more discussion, is there all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Carrie, next matter is, Madam Clerk?
Another resolution is to adopt this, a resolution in support of adequately funding Michigan schools.
Everyone has hopefully had a chance to review that, is there a motion to adopt?
Support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie.
I got one quick thing.